They have their face shielded tonight.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community School District. We will begin this evening with a moment of silence. And now if you will please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Mike Young will read our mission statement.
Thank you. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thanks, Mike. The next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to address the board? And if so, please come forward. Well, seeing no one, I'll skip my spiel about about the parameters in which we operate that public comment section. So we can move on then. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And I'm going to read off what items are on that this evening. It is the minutes of the August 10th, 2015 regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, a donation from the RJ McElroy Trust, graduation dates for the Waterloo Community School District High Schools, class of 2016, Cedar Valley Promise Empowerment Contract, Tri-County Child and Family Development Council Incorporated Contracted Service Agreement, the Iowa Voluntary Preschool Contracts, and the School Nursing Agreement for 2015-2016. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like to have pulled this evening?
B and I, please.
B and I. Great.
And unfortunately, C and D, for me, I'll abstain from voting on those.
Alphabet soup again tonight. Okay, C and D.
So bills due and payable, and then the donation from the McElroy Trust.
Great. So with that then, I would move that with items A, E, F, G, and H. I'll get that motion on the table to accept those items. Again, A, E, F, G, and H. Is that correct?
So moved.
Yes.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Then all those in favor of approving those consent agenda items, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. And chair votes aye, motion carried. Then we'll move on to item B on page four, personnel appointments and adjustments. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
So moved.
And I'll second.
Great. And discussion?
Yes, I just I just wanted to check as far as how we are with a week before school's starting and just how you're feeling, comfortable level as far as open positions, if there's any urgent needs, and I guess just kind of a synopsis of personnel.
Feeling pretty good. You know, it's a moving target this time of year. There are a number of resignations. I think there are six in this particular agenda. There are five that you haven't seen yet. Couple of them pretty shocking in terms of the curricular areas, but we've been really fortunate to get some candidates. Right now, we have technically four and a half positions. One of them is a hard-to-fill job, but I'm feeling pretty good. We've got some candidates. So I'm very optimistic about that. We are, and I've talked to the building principals about our commitment to not just hiring anyone. We're going to hire the brightest and the best. And if we have to start with a guest teacher, that's what we'll do until we get the best match for the position.
Including turning on my mic? Great. Then all those in favor of approving the personnel appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item C, which is bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings on page eight. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thanks. And discussion?
And just for the record, I'll abstain from voting on this because as an attorney, I represent a client who's paid by one of the bills.
Great. Anything further? Then all those in favor of approving the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Abstentions?
And I'll abstain.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. That brings us then to item D on page 15. And that recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept and acknowledge that this donation in the amount of $5,300 from RJ McElroy Trust for the 2015-2016 school year.
So moved.
And a second? Great. And I'm not sure who pulled that.
I I did. And just before discussion, I'll abstain from voting on this because I've since joined the McElroy Trust. So I abstain from voting on it there, too.
If Crystal's available, it'd be nice to.
So Crystal Buzzak can come up and maybe give us a little information if anybody else has questions?
Every year, the McElroy Trust will refill, I guess, our emergency, youth emergency funds. And so this year, we are needing to start out the year with the $5,300 donation. So that's a good thing because I know that Stacy's always telling us, make sure you use the funding, make sure you use the funding. So since I've been at the district, this is probably the biggest start that we've had to refill that generous donation. And so we're very, very lucky, as you can see, a number of elementary schools, which will be great because as schools starting, a lot of those schools' kids tend to lose supplies, misplace them. And so I know at the beginning of the year, that's what they'll start using a lot of those funds for.
Looks like it's all of our schools.
It is almost all of them. I think there's a few that actually were not listed, and I'm not sure off the top of my head. But it could be all. I didn't count them all off.
I was.
So do you ask for a certain amount based on your need then, or is it just what?
Yeah, so the McElroy Trust allocates a certain amount to each school based on their levels. So I believe elementary is like $500.
Okay.
And then it's about every three months, the business office will send a report to the McElroy Trust saying, here's where we're at for each school. And then the trust, with their own discretion, will determine whether or not they're going to refill it or not. And they've always been very generous and have always kept that balance above so we can continue to use it throughout the year.
Thank you.
What kind of medical expenses is it used for?
It's really up to the school's discretion. As you know, most of the elementary schools and a lot of the middle schools have family support workers and counselors. And so they try really hard to make sure that they utilize all the services in the community before they have to use the McElroy Trust. But there are times where there are students who might have broken their glasses and they really need to get glasses and they don't have that available and there's not funding through Salvation Army or the United Way because they'll go through their funds very quickly at the beginning of the month, too. And so we know that's kind of an important thing that we have to have done. So if it can't be, if the child or person can't be serviced through Success Street, which is kind of our in-school healthcare centers, then we'll utilize them to try to help families to make sure that there's no reason why the child can't continue in school.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is this kind of, I'm sorry, is this handled a little with the family support worker or right through the administration?
It's usually through the principal, but a lot of times the principals will work with the family support workers because they're the ones who are directly being contacted by the families when they have those urgent needs.
That's what I thought.
But the principal ultimately has the discretion of how the funding is used.
Okay.
Yep, great question.
And Crystal, I think I speak for all of us when I say hearty thank you to the RJ McElroy Trust. They have been a wonderful partner. They continue to do just wonderful things for us. And this is obviously a very needed thing. So would you please pass to Stacy as well that we are very appreciative of this generous donation?
Absolutely.
Definitely. Thanks. Any more questions for Crystal? Then all those in favor of accepting the donation from the RJ McElroy Trust, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the abstention. Chair votes aye, then the motion carries with one abstention. Sorry, Mike. I got so excited about that that great donation, so. And the next item on the consent agenda then is item I. It is on page 81. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the school nursing agreement with the Blackhawk County Health Department.
Also moved.
And a second?
Second.
Great. And is there discussion? I know Bruce, you're here this evening and I'm not sure who else, anybody, I'm not sure what the question is.
Just wondered as far as how the contract related to last year as far as services and if it's all pretty much the same.
Thank you, Cora. Pardon me.
Good evening.
I didn't mean to not see you back there.
It's okay. Yes, our contract has been enforced considerably the same. We're having the services in all of our buildings. And as you see, we're also increasing the pre-case services for the upcoming year. It has been a great value to us, having the services from Blackhawk County. And we thank them and the partnership that we've developed.
Cora, could you give just a few examples of what this actually covers in terms of nursing? Is it is it a nurse in every building? Is it certain hours?
I believe there's actually a nurse and and an assistant practically in all of our buildings. They're there throughout the complete day when we run into an emergency. They're on site. They can meet the needs of our students, get back with us, relate to the different services with the doctor, with the hospitals. It just opens up all medical communication for us in working with our students and meeting the needs for our district.
That's great. Excellent.
And I believe the nurses, the nurses do travel. They may be assigned to several buildings, but there's always somebody there, whether it's the nurse or the nurse assistant. And so students are covered, say, you know, safety wise.
The entire time.
Honestly, I think sometimes they get a workout, you know, especially if you go to an elementary building, the nurses and the nurses assistants. Sometimes kids need a Band-Aid or they just need a little pat on the back or a little hug or something. So I think they get kind of a workout. So we appreciate their efforts.
What I found valuable, though, is when we have a particular question on a medical need, they're right there to assist, find out what we need to know in order to meet the students' needs and have them remain in school. So that has been a good access. Bruce, anything else I need to add? All right.
Thanks, Bruce. Thank you, Cora. Anything further? Great. Then all those in favor of approving the school nursing agreement for 2015-2016, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That gets us through our consent agenda this evening. Brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the proposed boundary change for Irving Elementary. And this is item J on page 88. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the Facilities Committee and adjust the Irving Elementary School boundary as outlined on the attached map. Because this comes from committee, it doesn't need a second. But can I get that motion on the table? So moved.
And I'll second.
Thanks. Great. Jane, I'm going to turn that over to you then.
Sure, absolutely.
Great.
John Roof and I met actually quite some time ago. It's been, I think, maybe the better part of four months ago, maybe. And we, it was right after we had, well, we had changed the boundaries last summer. I think it was August 11th when we changed the boundaries. But John is working on a housing development and he realized that the new housing development, of which families do not reside yet at this time, was was split. The line was split and it was split kind of, not even down a street, it was just split in the middle. And so he came to us with a request that possibly we could look at putting the entire housing development within one school, district, or the other. And he didn't have a preference one way or the other, but just thought maybe it would be easier for for marketability and for a variety of reasons to have it be within the same district or the same school boundary. So I met with the the Board Committee, the Facilities Committee, and we thought that at this point in time, it really was a fair request. And so we are bringing it to you for your approval. And I don't know if John wants to say anything or not, but I think that's probably a summary of what we discussed.
Well, and John, I just want to say initially that I'm excited. You know, this is a piece of land that the district has had and now it's being privately developed. And I know that the Facilities Committee spoke about how happy we are that this is occurring. And I think it's a great thing for the neighborhood. And we appreciate you being proactive and forward-thinking about, you know, as you go forward, not not coming to us after it's already happened. So no building has happened yet and that's going to be a good thing, so. Other questions?
I would like to say a few words if it's appropriate at this time.
That'd be great.
Superintendent, members of the board and staff, I'm John Roof and I, our company's at 1507 Commercial Street in Waterloo. For the last eight, nine years, we've been building homes. And we started in the Cunningham School District, built about 15 homes there. We then moved over to the the school district where you used to have a building, the Lincoln Site. We built 20 homes in there. We built homes even before Highland was built because we knew it was coming. We built homes in that area near Highland. And on 8th Street, when we started over there, which would go to Lowell School, we found out that there, because we went Veridian and had the appraisal done and we couldn't get an appraisal of very much money because there hadn't been a new home built and sold on East 8th Street in almost 100 years. They used a 1906 comp and tried to ratchet it forward. So having done that in several school districts, we're now over on Baltimore Field. And when I first came to the superintendent, I asked, please don't divide it down the middle. I have more information for you tonight, which is going to impact you, I'm sure. Since we talked, there's 20-plus lots, maybe more, where the old Irving School was. And then there's another lot on Williston Field. By the time you're done, if if you aren't careful, you're going to have a lot of houses that are all being pushed towards one school. And so I'm here tonight to tell you that it's it's important that you consider this fully, and I'm sure you have. However, I would like to make sure that you know the number of houses that may go crowding into Irving before you make a final decision. And some of these won't be built for five years by by contract with the city. To me, I think it's important because I know what a job it is to make sure that you spread the schools evenly and that you have families positioned the way they they would like to be. We like to build right near the schools. That way they can walk their kids to school, and they seem to like that. I brought with me tonight Karen Kaiser, who's a principal in RE/MAX, and she's the one marketing that. And there's a lot of other things to consider. But I'm here tonight to say, please look at all of this and look at the 60-plus homes that may be pushed at Irving School. And I know we were kind of on the cusp of maybe going to Kittrel or Kingsley. I don't know, you know, how those lines were drawn. But I would caution you to please look at that carefully. It's going to make a difference how they go. You know, and the houses are affordable houses. These houses will be 150, 160, 165, 170 type thing. So it's, it impacts us, too, on our sales effort. So that's all I wanted to share with you. We enjoy doing what we're doing. We hope to continue.
Can I ask you a question? That means 60-plus besides the 24?
Now, there'd be 24, and then on Williston Field, there'd be five to seven. And then there will be 20, 30-plus at the old Irving School. So when you start adding them together, if you're all going to push to Irving, it's going to be maybe a little congested. I don't know. I'm just giving you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know how that Irving lot would be broken? Because I know a block over is Kittrel. The old Irving lot.
You know, I don't know. We hadn't talked about that when we met. So so now just kind of hearing this, I think, you know, we we may want to not take action on this tonight and take it back to Facility Committee in light of this new information. I think I'm not exactly sure how those lots break out and which which school they're in. I mean, I think you're saying that they're in Irving, but I don't know that.
I don't know that they are either.
I don't know because I don't.
Sue, we did talk about it, but this, the map that we have tonight, doesn't show that lot. And I know, Mike, we did, you and Lyle and I are on Facilities. We did talk about it. And I guess I would ask that, I realize it's been a few months, but with that information, I do want to make sure that we do make a prudent decision on this, so.
Because I know a block down is Kittrel.
Yes, yes. And which of the old Irving site and the Williston Field site, I think, would certainly go.
Williston is Irving.
Is definitely Irving. But where that old Irving breaks out, I'm not sure. I don't have that right here.
And I think probably information that would be helpful is, I think you said, in in the next five years, possibly. But if there's any timeline, that would help. Because I know that selecting school boundaries and revisiting school boundaries is part of the natural cycle. It's not always a pleasant part of the of the cycle. But, you know, housing trends do shift over time, and so we do have to look at those. So if it's something that, you know, isn't going to be germinated for a little while, we might not, we could maybe take action on this tonight. But if there are things that are going to be happening within the next two to three to four years, I don't think we're looking at wanting to change boundaries for a few years. So I think, you know, maybe a timeline of what you're thinking and that would give us time to revisit the the placement of school boundaries.
We now have two houses on Baltimore Field on foundation, being finished.
Okay.
Should be available for sale within the next four or five weeks. And we have the capacity to build 18 homes a year. But it we have to deal with a lot of other factors. And there's infrastructure that has to go in and that type of thing, so.
Facilities will be meeting.
We meet this week.
Tomorrow.
We meet Wednesday, so.
We could discuss this.
We can definitely put it on our agenda. If there's any information, like Jane said, that that might be helpful or pertinent to us, can you get it to the one of us?
I absolutely can. Who would you like me, would you like me to bring it to your office?
Yeah, that, or you can send it to Pam. Either way would be fine. And we do actually meet tomorrow at noon as part of our monthly, regular scheduled meeting. So if you did have something for tomorrow, you could certainly give it to us. Otherwise, we would be meeting again. Or Wednesday, Wednesday, Wednesday. Sorry, it's Wednesday.
Oh, it's Wednesday.
Wednesday, sorry, not tomorrow.
I was going to say, I could skip dinner tonight and go to.
No, we don't want you, no, we want you to eat.
I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, sometime tomorrow or Wednesday morning would be great.
Be great. We'll get it on the agenda and we'll get it taken care of.
That's good. Karen, did you want to say anything? Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
I'm just looking at the project from a marketability standpoint. And since we're looking at homes ranging from 152,000 and up, if you look at our market, if you're comparing, looking at the two schools, of course, the Kittrel School, their average sell price in that area is like 124,000. In the Irving School, the average sell price is 54,000. So we're from a marketing and economic development standpoint, if you could consider more of the Kittrel School, I think that would make it a little bit easier to, from, you know, the average sell price range, to take that into consideration. Also, for, if you take, he's building two bedrooms and three bedrooms. They all have at least two baths, double garage. And if you take the stats on that and you just poll for, in that zone, the average sell price is 148,000.
Karen, may I interrupt you? Not that this isn't information that's interesting, but we do not base our boundary decisions on on economics and sale prices. We base it on where our where our students and our families reside. Exactly. So so while that's that's interesting information, it really isn't, won't be relevant to the decision that we make in regards to the boundaries.
And I do think, I mean, I, we've, we have had several calls on the development as far as if you're looking at, you know, how soon it's going to develop. Average days on market is usually about 54 days. So we're hoping that, you know, we'll have quite a few of them sold by the end of this year.
That's great. And that, you're talking about the, which which parcel are you speaking of when you talk about those being sold?
Baltimore.
The Baltimore. Okay, great.
Those are the houses that are already there.
Great. Thank you.
So are these 24 residences in the two blocks? I just want to clarify, for both blocks?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
It is all Irving. Okay, great. Well, I know we have a motion on the table, but I would like to ask that someone move to postpone our vote on this. And we will take this back. Thank you, Mike. And is there a, is there a second? Great, Sue, thank you. And we'll take this back to Facilities. We meet Wednesday at noon and we'll get a recommendation and get it back to the full board then. Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. So can we vote then on that postponement, please? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. We'll be seeing that before us another time. Thanks. Then that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is item K. It's on page 90, and it is the Agreement for Technology Services Sharing with the City of Waterloo. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve and sign the memorandum of agreement to provide network and supplemental technology support services to the City of Waterloo. And Matt O'Brien, you beat me to it. So he's already up here, but can I have a, can I get that motion on the floor?
Also moved.
Thanks. And a second?
Second.
Great. Matt?
Just briefly, as the board is aware, we've had an agreement since April of 2012 with the City of Waterloo where we've been providing them with technology services. And the board's also aware that earlier this calendar year, we notified the city of an intent to change that agreement, just trying to make that be more sustainable for for both the school district and quite honestly, for the city as well. And we talked about that at a previous board meeting. This agreement that is before you right now is then kind of the next phase of our partnership. So the city now does have an IT director on their payroll. And he and I worked together through the transition process, which I think went to seamless as any transition can possibly go. And basically looked at them still wishing to utilize the services of the district. And obviously, we want to be a good partner with them and certainly recognize the value of a partnership to both organizations if it's structured equitably. So this agreement is kind of an initial stab at that. You'll note that the agreement is really structured kind of open-ended, so it really allows both organizations to continue this until either organization sees that a change needs to be made or a parting of ways needs to happen as well. So I think that both the city's IT director and myself have a have a good relationship and are really looking at trying this out and hoping that this proves to be equitable for both organizations. But I think we're both certainly open to partnerships or lack thereof, just as long as both organizations are obviously getting some sort of benefit or or not benefit, in which case they'll look at at some sort of other restructuring. So the agreement that is before you, quite honestly, is really the structure that I proposed going to that the city was also very open to, which I think is about as equitable as you can get. Instead of just looking at a block sum, which is really what we operated under the past, was just a block, we're going to provide these services for X amount of dollars. Instead, we're moving to a billable hourly rate. So that will really, I think, be more fair to both organizations and really allow the the city to use us as needed and also allow us some flexibility with that as well. So it's a two-tier system, basically with a lower rate, which covers our costs for kind of the non-emergency during normal business hour type of requests. And then a higher, which is basically at a time and a half rate, rate that type of requests, and then a higher, which is basically at a time and a half rate, uh, rate that will then come into play if they specify it's an emergency or if it's an after-hours request. So our costs are covered with, you know, a slight margin of profit, um, really if it's the standard request. And then obviously, we've got a larger profit margin coming in for the emergency type of request. So if that's before you, again, I'm, I'm happy that, uh, both organizations have decided to continue to partner. That's certainly something that we've been wanting to do, assuming that it's equitable, and, and we think that at least for this phase, this is gonna be the, the best, uh, way forward to be equitable to both sides. So we'll, we'll try it out and obviously, uh, we'll keep an eye on how it's being utilized and the strain it's putting on our staff. And, and of course, we have the ability to modify, uh, at any time if, if we need to.
Do you track the calls for service then, as far as the profitability?
Yeah, we actually, we track everything. Dr. Lindemann and I get along very well because we're both very data-driven, so, um, we do track everything both. So right now, for our district, uh, as well as for services with the City, then we track all of our calls. We kinda have a caveat for the district's help desk that if it takes longer to track it than it did to actually solve the problem, then staff are allowed to, to kind of not input that into our system. But otherwise, uh, we have a help desk system, that's a database system, that all of our, uh, tickets, is what we call them, all of our requests for service are tracked through. So we'll continue to utilize that system and just adapt that under these parameters to build the city accordingly.
So it could be profitable for the schools, correct?
Yeah, we're, with this agreement, I can tell you, we're certainly not going to lose any money. Like I said, at the lower level, we're doing better than breaking even, and at the higher level, then that's basically the additional profit that we're coming in. If you look at an average of our costs, the way I came up with the sixty-dollar rate, quite honestly, was I looked at the staff, including myself, that are likely to respond to these, um, incidents, and basically calculated a per diem cost, tossed in, uh, an estimate of thirty percent for benefits, and did an average cost of that, which was in the low fifties. Obviously, we have some costs on top of that, you know, in terms of insurance and gas for district vehicles and supplies and whatnot, so, uh, rounded that up to sixty dollars. So the, the sixty-dollar lower tier rate more than covers our costs with a little bit of profit built in. And then, uh, the ninety-dollar emergency rate will, will certainly, um, provide some additional in. Now, the thing that we have to balance that with is we obviously have X number of staff members. So depending on, you know, the number of requests that are coming in, while our costs are covered, we also wanna make sure that it's not happening to the detriment of the district, which was a concern with the previous agreement. So that'll be the big thing that we'll need to monitor, is just making sure that, um, with our current staffing levels, that this is not putting an undue strain on our staff to be able to, obviously, care, care about the, the interests of the district first, quite honestly.
So it was covered through a lump sum before, and did you look at, over the last year of the, your last agreement, how many times you made service and how long they were, and, and did it, did it, does it come out pretty close, or is this going to benefit one or the other, or? These are all averages, obviously.
Yeah, and it's a little difficult because the previous agreement also included myself in terms of leadership services. So there's a certain amount of, I'll just call it leadership overhead as well, which existed before, you know, attending department head meetings, council meetings, just paying bills, you know, all those sorts of things that now will not be part of this agreement, um, simply because they have their own IT Directors. So now that piece of it is gone, and instead we're kind of supplemental support, uh, for technology as well as, uh, helping them with their network and phone system and servers.
So it's not really comparing apples to apples anymore?
Right, it's very difficult because it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. We certainly did look, in fact, part of the previous agreement was, uh, we sent them quarterly reports. When we sent them the bill, we also sent them quarterly reports of all of the service broken down by categories, et cetera. So, um, I don't want it to sound like we didn't look at data because we certainly did, but it also wasn't necessarily an apples-to-apples comparison.
Ease up some of that issue too, cause we'll still be recording them, but, um, it'll be part of a, a system now that is actually billing with that, so.
Right.
You're combining the two.
Anything else for Matt? Thank you, and I'm glad that the transition has gone well of handing off the City IT person, that's great to hear too.
We are as well.
Great, well.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. With that then, um, all those in favor of approving the Agreement for Technological Services, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That brings us to item L on our agenda, and this is a board policy change, it's our second reading. It is, um, policy six oh two point five on high school graduation, and it is on page ninety-five in your agenda. And the recommended motion is the Board, the Board approved the following policy, high school graduation.
Also move.
And a second? Thanks, Mike, great. And Tara Thomas is here tonight. I know we have one minor correction that was, uh, sent to us today, that there was a advanced word that was in both.
Correct, since the first reading, some language has been tightened up, as is reflected in the edits in your board book. And Dr. Debbie Lee and Cora Turner, the authors of, co-authors really, of the additions to the current policy, are here to answer any questions in regard to the now three-tiered approach, which would include an honors and core diploma option for high school students to apply to pursue.
Great, are there any questions for Tara?
Well, I just, as far as, I just think we need to clarify this, because I've had a few people say to me, well, why wouldn't my student apply for the lowest one if they're not intending to go? And I, I think we need to define that the path is the standard path. For the standard diploma is, is the path for Waterloo students. And that these aren't just like a dangling option that they can choose. They're for situations when it would benefit the student. Is that, could you elaborate on that?
Absolutely, and Debbie, Cora and I have talked about this extensively, actually today as well, to just reiterate those points. Both or all three options would entail the children both completing their ninth and tenth grade. So essentially, you would already go through the first two years of high school as, you know, as the traditional path. Once the child reaches that age to go into his junior, his or her junior or senior year, the bonus for children at that point who might want and have that level of academic rigor would be to apply for and then possibly pursue the honors designation on their diploma. Obviously, a great advantage, I think, for students upon that time in their lives, when they would then apply for the post-secondary opportunities to have their diploma designated as a recognition or an acknowledgement of the higher-level rigor classes they pursued, be it IB, AP, otherwise. The other side of that sort of differentiated approach would be to consider that we have some children who have completed their ninth and tenth grade years, and they are only a few credits shy of then, you know, being able to complete that diploma. And what we found in talking with a lot of the staff members working with the alternative, you know, options that we lay out for some of these students, is some of them have left high school and have taken on family or work obligations outside of the home. And the credits that they're shy of completing might end up going toward a Hawkeye or another institution. So now we're saying, hey, we have this core diploma option, if you apply for it, and you could come back and finish up maybe that one or two missing, you know, piece of that puzzle to complete your degree and thereby open up that whole world of opportunity in post-secondary education, that not having a high school diploma would not allow them to be able to pursue, if that makes sense.
And even, I was, I was looking at it like employment opportunities, because some employment, um, places require a high school diploma. And so this, again, would offer that to the student that maybe was struggling with just a few credit hours balancing, but it was, it would give them an opportunity to be employable also.
Absolutely, in fact, today, we, Cora and I were talking with Cory Kelchon, and there's one student who comes to mind. She has taken on employment and some family responsibilities, and the excitement in, for some of these people to learn that you're so close, and now here's an option that by application you could pursue, is just really opening that avenue for them to be able to then get that degree that would give them the better job opportunities and secure a better economic advantage for their families in the future. And that's where we've been really talking to the alternative staff to pinpoint that. On the other side of that, with the honors option, what we know is a lot of young people will choose more rigorous classes and then sometimes feel that they might be slighted in not being given a special designation for that achievement. So beyond a, a ribbon or something around your neck when you walk across that stage, now we can say your diploma has been given an enhancement, if you will, in terms of that honors, the honors pathway that they could now apply for after completing their ninth and tenth grade years. And as Debbie Lee was talking about earlier in, in regard to numbers, it would be a small percentage of students, potentially. So the vast majority of students would still be using that traditional path. But to give the differentiated diploma approach really makes sense when you look at how many of our students aren't fitting, you know, a cookie cutter.
And Tara, the other thing I wanna add is just to be clear, the English and math and science, those components, those eight credits are the same, whether it's core, whether it's honors, whether it's standard. And so, um, because I know I've heard similar comments about, we wanna make sure that this core diploma, it's, it's a diploma. We are not, this isn't a watered-down diploma, this diploma still has the main components that we expect of all of our students upon completion of high school.
Absolutely, and one thing I don't think a lot of people are aware is that surrounding districts have utilized these differentiated diplomas for years, Waverly, Cedar Falls, and Des Moines are three districts that have gone this route in the past. And so I think for us, a, a lot of people upon hearing that, it might be surprised that we hadn't offered this years prior.
Gives our students one more option.
Absolutely.
Great. Mike, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say one thing too, that, um, also just to clarify, we have, we have a lot of students who stay for a, maybe they don't get across the stage, or they don't earn their forty-four credits in four years. And so they may need another semester or another year. We have that happening already, and we will continue to have that happening, because, as a matter of fact, the state recognizes that, that students have different needs, and so they do actually publish a four-year graduation rate, a five-year graduation rate. Soon, we're gonna see a six-year graduation rate. We, we, we prefer to have them stay with their cohort class, but sometimes a student needs an extra year. We would still, um, opt to have that as, as the, the best path for students, to stay that fifth year to get all of the credits. This is just a, it's, it offers a, um, a different pathway if something happens that that's just not, not gonna happen. Some, we call it, um, sometimes life, um, life, what did we say the word was? We had a, circumstances, just life circumstances sometimes happen that, um, it, it just for an individual child, that we would say, we would sit down and have a conversation with them. We would talk about whether that is the right, um, right option for them, they would apply, and then we would go on from there. But we really would want them to stay the fifth year or whatever it takes to get the full traditional diploma, the traditional diploma.
So I think maybe, maybe there's just some misunderstanding in the community of what these are. So maybe a PR campaign of what we have here, which is, we're offering something very good, it's, it's, it's worthwhile. So maybe just educating the community.
Absolutely, in fact, after this reading tonight, the plan would be to share both internally and externally the different options now that would be set forth with this policy change. And the exciting thing would be to hopefully catch some of those individuals that Dr. Lindemann referred to that might be in an exception situation, be it taking on family or personal work responsibilities. It, it's gonna be a wonderful opportunity to connect with some of those people and say, hey, you were a student once, we don't want to sort of have you slip through the crack, because now you can pursue, uh, complete that diploma in a way that wasn't an option before and give your family a better economic future.
Question, does this core diploma, is it enough to get you entered into a college class? Is that kind of, is, is, is there, uh, what are, what barriers, um, other than having possibly some students take advantage of something like this, which is good in some ways, but maybe not so good, because I would still want them to go on to further education if they could. And I guess my question is, without the forty-four, are they still considered that kind of a graduate?
I don't know the answer to that. Debbie, do you wanna address that?
And, and while they're coming up, I'll, I'll start the answer, and then Debbie's gonna, gonna help a little bit. But I would tell you that this is a diploma, so it, it is a full, a full high school diploma. Now, where I think Debbie's gonna, gonna go in is gonna talk about, there are, there are, um, entrance or admissions requirements for all of the institutions. So regardless of what diploma you have, there are still requirements. Do you wanna talk a little bit about that for colleges?
Definitely, and it's very possible that because of the four, three, three, three requirements, the four years of English, three of, uh, science, math, and social studies, our students who are on this could be taking our, even on a pathway of rigorous courses, and maybe something happens at the beginning of their senior year, and they're saying, oh my goodness, I am not gonna be able to finish this year and graduate with my class, I need, somebody's gonna see that, and they're gonna say, we can help you with this. Now, because of the courses that child has taken, for the Regents universities, they would figure those courses into what's called the RAI or the Regents Admissions Index. And they would figure those courses and see if they would be able to get in. It, as long as their compass score and their path is correct, at Hawkeye, there should be no problem with them getting it at all. We have students with the Regents University who finish all four years and don't have the right numbers to be able to get in to a Regents University. So it does depend on the type of course they take, and not just that they have a diploma or that they've completed a certain number of credits. All the universities go in and look at, oh, here's the list of courses those stu, students took, and here's how it counts, here's the RAI, and here's how we're figuring it, and there's just that kind of thing that goes into that. But it's very possible that a student who has taken and been on a, a rich rigorous pathway might encounter this life circumstance that we talked about and have to, uh, divert from that and take a different journey, but still, at some point, would be able to get into a Regents University. It's possible. There's lots of scenarios that that, that we could look at and how this would affect students that way.
I've worked with, and when I worked at UNICU, um, when I worked for the Talent Search Program in the upper bound math science program, I've had three students who had been in the top ten percent of their class until their senior year, and, I mean, until the second semester of their senior year, and almost didn't graduate because of, um, different requirements. And so it would benefit even those kids who then all, all three of them went on to college. One of them got their masters in one year, which, I mean, was amazing, I'm like, wow, it took me three, anyway. I mean, so, so it, I mean, I, I do see the benefit of having, cause it would really was just something in life really just happened that was horrible for that particular student, and, um, I do have a question that's not related to the core, um, curriculum. And that is, that is the honors program, would that be a weighted GPA, or is that going to be a regular GPA for the honors program?
The GPA would count just as policy states it would for those courses. The diploma, uh, doesn't have, doesn't take into consideration the GPA at all. We could have put that in there, that they'd have to have a certain GPA, and we decided not to do that because of the weighted and unweighted grades, we just said, mm, nope, not gonna do that. We wanna look at, are you taking rigorous courses? And that was the idea. So whether they're in a, the standard, the core, or the honors, if they're taking a class that has a weighted grade, they would get that weighted grade on their GPA.
And have we had communication then with the post-secondary, I should ask these questions in my email, I'm sorry. Have we had, have we had communication then with the, um, post-secondary education, especially in this area, to talk about the difference between that honors diploma that might be helpful in helping them if they don't quite meet the R, RAI, or they go to like a Wharton, and say, ah, they were on the honors track, which means that they are prepared rigorwi, rigorous-wise?
Yeah, it, it, and again, my understanding is, it's, they have a diploma, that's it, they have a diploma. Then they go into the transcript, start looking at the classes that they're taking. That, it's those classes that are truly important. Now, in the RAI, it's like, these classes weigh this much, and they go in and figure that out, submit that. But then when it gets right down to it, they look at their transcript and look at the courses involved. Not that they had, would have an honors diploma, not that they have a core or a standard, just like they don't really. Not that they would have an honors diploma, not that they have a core or standard, just like they don't really look so much as whether they're valedictorian or salutatorian either. They look at those courses and are they the rigorous courses?
And that's for the Regent's schools because at a private school, they're look at all of that. So that's why I just wondered if you had a conversation, because we would look at, in admissions, we looked at valedictorian and salutatorian is, is different and that would weight.
And that might be at the private schools. You are correct on that. We are looking at the Regent's Universities and how this will work with that.
And I think once this is, is passed, Tara alluded to the fact that we, we don't have a policy yet until tonight's vote and that'll tell us. And so then we'll make some determinations. We obviously have work to do to communicate this to students and work with staff and, and community and parents and, and colleges. So we will do that too, depending on, on, on what you, the action you take tonight.
Definitely.
I would assume, I'm sorry Debbie, I didn't mean, I would assume it could be part of the high school profile that goes with, you know, every transcript is accompanied by a high school profile when somebody applies to college. And the explanation of the different types of delineations of the diploma could be in that, I would think, pretty easily.
One more question. So does the Department of Education have a minimum credits? And is that the thirty-five?
No, they don't. They, they require the four, three, 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 and it's up to us to decide what the courses are.
And we have just always had the forty-four as a standard.
And earlier when I came in a number of years ago, we actually upped that from whatever it was to forty-four. And the other thing is required by the state is, it's called in chapter 12, it tells us what the content needs to be in different courses. So that is something we look at and utilize as well. Although for the record, it needs to be very updated. It is really old, so.
That's the state's policy.
Yeah, that's not the Waterloo.
Not ours. That's the state's policy.
Well, I've never been involved in the political end of that. So I wasn't sure what was required.
Not ours. We're doing great.
Not us. No.
We've looked at our policies.
And again, well, and I just feel that the communication piece, especially to staff too, so that they understand what this is. Because potentially, I mean, I was looking for some hardcore numbers from someone that had given me a question, which I knew wouldn't be realistic. But, but potentially maybe one person would do it a year or five person one year, or maybe nobody one year. You know, in the, in the core, in the honors, maybe twenty-five or thirty, you know, but we're not talking in our seven, eight hundred graduates. We're not talking even ten percent that would be in the, you know, the core. I mean, I think the misconception is that this is an option that people can choose to take a lower track, even our instructors. And, you know, our teachers are thinking that too. In the gym, someone said that to me and I was like, no, that's not it at all. So I just think if we get that communication piece out exactly what it is and exactly what all these other district have done, that we're actually behind the cue ball on this one, that we weren't as proactive as some of the other districts were in offering that.
I think it's also important for us to understand that there is a piece in here that retroactively with the core provides us to do kind of a, a catch-up with students that are hanging out there that really could come under graduation because we're retroactively doing that. We asked, I know Cora spoke with a lawyer on that and yes, we can do that. So there might this very first year, there might be a little bit more students because we're bringing in a lot of the past ones and say, do we have a deal for you? And so we are going to be doing that. And then from this point forward, all the new will be much, much lower. That, I, we're kind of anticipating that just to let you know that. So it doesn't look like we have this incredibly high number of people. We not. Very, the core diploma should be very judiciously used. And at the very, the earliest, as Tara was saying, that anybody could apply for that would be the last part of their sophomore year, early part of their junior. And we're just going to still sit down, make a plan with those students, see if we can't get them back on track to get to the standard. I mean, there's all kinds of options. We can support them and work with them in, in doing that. But, you know, it, again, just coming up to the last semester of their senior year, if this needs to work for them to help them out and, you know, there's just so many different situations out there, but very judiciously applied, very.
So will there be a, a committee of staff members then that would look at each individual case?
We are going to require, I put in, and I'm thinking, we haven't nailed all of that down, but my initial thinking, might change, but my initial thinking would be the student, parent, or guardian, administrative representation, possibly a couple of teachers and a counseling staff.
And I was going to bring that up, that very thing, so.
Well, and the application process, do you have a kind of a set as far as the application that you're looking at? You know, as far as parameters that you're going to allow or disallow or that type of thing? Are you that far in the game or not yet?
We are not that far and we need to get that far really fast. And so once we're done here, we're going to move that ahead very rapidly.
It'll be the same committee, well, not the same committee, but the, the same base committee members, obviously the teacher involved, a staff member, and then someone from downtown probably would be involved in that as well?
I think there needs to be and that would be part of the administrative staff.
I think that's.
Again, is, is, you know, the appropriate use of that core diploma, the appropriate use of the honors diploma.
Well, especially for the honors, either or, actually.
Either or. Very appropriate use of that. That's what we're looking for and we are going to watch that. And if we have to come back and add additional guidelines, we will do that. For me personally, the whole process of this was very, very important that we provide this differentiated path for students, but protect the integrity of the Waterloo diploma. And that has been my job for a number of years and I truly believe in that. And I believe this does that, or I wouldn't have brought it forward.
And I, I said last time that when I first read this, I was excited about it. I support it and I still do. Just the process for, for people at home, if they've got questions, I think you've heard tonight, this, there's much more of a process to this and it's the application process to get in. I mean, there are things like graduating early. You can't graduate early with a core diploma. It's only available, again, through an application process and then only with your cohort as well. And so a lot of, I think the questions that I heard and, and concerns that were raised here over the last couple of weeks have all been answered from my perspective. I appreciate everybody that's talked about it and heard, you know, from a teacher about American Lit and comp. And that was, I think addressed and I really appreciated that feedback as well. But I, I think this is definitely a good thing to have, to have in the, kind of the menu of options in the water of schools. And I think, I've also found that in education, there's not a lot of stuff that's brand new. Oftentimes it helps best to implement programs that have been implemented in other school districts. And so this, I, you know, I appreciate what's gone on in Cedar Falls as an example, Waverly, Shell Rock, and then Des Moines. And I think the Des Moines area, I think Urbendale and some other schools and seeing what they've done and what's worked for them. And then as we develop our own process here, to me, it looks like a, a great program. And as we get through it as well, just like any policy, if, if it needs to be amended and tweaks, we'll have time to do that. But I think it's a very good option. It'll be good for our students as well. So thank you all for your work on this.
You're welcome. Any more additional questions?
Then for me. Great. Then all those in favor of approving the board policy change for high school graduation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Thanks for all your work. Appreciate it. Well, that concludes our action items this evening. And we can move on to the next item, which is the superintendent's report.
Absolutely. Well, I am excited tonight to just give a hearty welcome back to our students and our staff. And, and they will be joining us very shortly. Our staff returns on Wednesday formally. But I can tell you, being out in the buildings, they are there. They are working and they are in shorts and flip flops and putting up bulletin boards beyond belief. And so they're just doing a really great job of, of getting some work done even ahead of time. So I appreciate that. And, and we're excited to have our students come on Monday. So I just wanted to take the opportunity on the air, I guess, to remind anybody about registration. We have, our central, centralized registration is happening here in this building. And it has been just wonderful to see the new families come in. I think today when I came down the steps, I believe there were seven families waiting in the lobby, waiting for an opportunity to come in and register. So that's, that's really great. And any parents who are, have not registered their children, there's still time to take care of that before Monday. It just makes everything go a little bit more smoothly from, for your student and also for the school as well. So on Thursday night, many of the schools are having back-to-school nights. I know my own children have their own back-to-school night and we have our supplies waiting right by the door. So as soon as Thursday comes, we are ready to go. So check that out. If you, if you haven't heard from your school or haven't connected on your email, be sure to check that out. A lot of those are, are happening Thursday night. And we've adjusted our, our teacher's workday so that they can, can have that event in the evening. I think that's going to be a great thing. Two, just two more things. One, one of the things I wanted to share is that our district leadership team, which is, is me and several, several other of the district leaders, had the opportunity this past week to attend leader and me training for a portion of a day. And it really was amazing. And many of us, Tara was there and Charles was there, Bev. It was, it was really a great, amazing opportunity for us to learn a lot more about that and what our schools are doing and to help be part of that, that guidance on, on how that would be implemented. It was really a, a wonderful thing. And I just wanted to, I think it's appropriate to, to thank the Chamber and the Waterloo, or I'm sorry, the Cedar Valley Chamber and Alliance because they paid for that training because they see that's just an amazing connect for us to, to be trained. So I, I appreciate that and it was really, it was time well spent, very much so. High school reform, I have been a little bit, I haven't mentioned a lot about it this summer, but I just wanted to make sure that our viewers know that we are hard at work with the High School Reform Committee. We have met multiple times this summer. And right now we're, we're meeting, we met last week, we're meeting again tomorrow morning. And so we are very much hard at work. I will say that there was just a little bit of a pause and a little bit of a spread between our, our meetings because of, you know, parents and, and some of our, our business people who are serving on those committees, that a lot of people had vacation in July. And so we, we did sneak in one meeting, but we are back on track and we are meeting quite regularly now. And so we are trying to really hone in those themes that we looked at. And by themes, I just mean the way that we could organize our facilities to make sure that we can have career and technical education here in Waterloo and, and expand it. And so we're excited about that. I think that the community will, will be ready very soon, you know, within the month or, month or so, to share a lot more information and given, provide an update. And our staff will be giving an update to them on Friday. So I didn't want anybody to think that we are not hard at work with that. We just haven't reported on it because it's been a little bit different with summer. But we are back on, back hard at work and, and definitely on track. And then finally, I just found out, several of us just found out, we have two board members who are, who are not rerunning for this, for the board. And one of them, Andrea Sparks, we were going to do something a little bit later, but one of them, Andrea Sparks is, is, tonight is her last meeting, even though technically she is a board member through September, but she is going to be missing the last meeting. And so I did not want her to leave without, her husband sent her these beautiful flowers tonight, which was our clue that something was different.
Yes.
So I, you know, Andrea, thank you for your four years of service. She has been a board member since 2011 and has been a wonderful addition to the, to the board and always just a wonderful voice of reason in a very calm but direct way. And I just, I think you have contributed immensely. So I don't want to turn the whole thing into the Andrea Sparks night. But I, but I do want you to know that we appreciate everything that you, you do.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yeah, I try to be calm. I use the same thing on my husband.
And it got you flowers.
And it got me flowers.
Beautiful flowers. Well, Andrea, I'm going to start our board comments tonight by saying, I'm going to echo what Jane said and, and your flowers are lovely. In fact, I do think that we should just have them as protocol for every meeting going forward. So.
I think so too, yes.
But I do want to present you with an award of excellence and I'm going to turn this around, but it's for your service to the Board of Education. By word indeed, your presence has enriched the lives of students and served as an example for all. So we proudly present this to you. And I have to say, I agree with Jane that I always look to you. You are a calm voice of reason. You, your, the experience that you brought to the board from having been in our buildings and been an educator was invaluable. And I really appreciate the four years. I know we all do. And I'm going to give everybody a chance to talk. But I just want you to know how much I've learned from your competence and beautiful confidence when you speak. I love that you don't get rattled and that I appreciate what you have to say. So I hope that you enjoy your retirement and enjoy your time traveling and doing fun things with David and that you won't be a stranger to the district.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm going to keep track of what's happening here, especially with, with moving forward, with the choices we have for improving our schools. Very much so. Yeah, I was very wistful walking in tonight, thinking this is my last meeting. And I was tears in my eyes, really. It's been a great board to serve on and I feel it was an honor to serve on the Waterloo School Board in Waterloo. We have a great community. I support it very much.
Well, thank you for all your time. We appreciate it. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mike Kinsey. And then you all can go through your board comments and say what you want to Andrea, so.
I don't have any other specific comments. Just wanted to, it's been a pleasure to serve with you, Andrea, and sit next to you most of the time.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we've been over on the right side here.
Best with your travels in future.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent. Angie?
I would echo kind of what Shanley and Jane said. Whenever my heart starts racing before it's my turn to talk and you've had an opportunity to calm it down and bring that, like this peace to a situation, especially in an expulsion hearing, where I want to cry every time. I, I definitely appreciate what you bring to the table and think that that will definitely be missing when you're not here. With that said, not that we want to get rid of her or Mike very soon, but don't forget that September eighth, there won't be another opportunity before September eighth for us to remind you to go out and vote.
Please don't forget to vote. Yes.
Sue?
Well, first I'll start out. Envy, I'm sure enjoyed getting to work with you and know you and, and just your, your knowledge of the, the field. You know, I always look to the, the people in the trenches and you had that experience and that's so appreciated. And I think it's, it's valued and it's more valuable than lots of us that have never been in a classroom. So I appreciate that. Then down to business. I, I did forget on the agenda items and I apologize. That was bad on me. But for the graduation dates, did they check? Because that's the Cedar Valley Cup weekend. And Friday night, going up Ridgeway Avenue, you don't want to do that. You know, with the cup traffic and going to McLeod, I mean, you can go other routes, but I don't know if that was explored. So I'm just checking.
We explored an awful lot since I was experiencing last year's attempt to solidify a date. And we checked with the state, we got ahold of all the potential athletic events, but not that. And, and so I'll do a little exploration about what's the possible effect and how we can work with that versus work against that. So thank you.
I, I thought of that in the weekend and it coincided. So I just, especially with, it starts Friday night. So the Friday night would be the issue. It's not Thursday yet. So it's just Friday and then all day Saturday. So. And then also a, a parent had asked me about, again, and just bringing this up because I was asked, about holding the Wednesday night again for a church night and having graduation on church night. So just a point that they wanted to say that, you know, he's actually a pastor and said, you know, I thought we tried to keep Wednesday nights open. So just bringing that up also for future use.
Thanks, Sue. Mike? Don't worry, by the way, your plaque's coming.
No, that's, that's, that's quite all right. I would though like to thank Andrea Sparks again and kind of echo the comments we've heard tonight. Andrea, you are one of the kindest people. I know you have a huge heart, are incredibly compassionate about kids. And on the board, you've heard from a lot of other people, you were often, the, the calming, the rational, reasonable presence for all of us. For everybody that's listening, Andrea worked for a number of years, close to thirty years? In, in the Waterloo schools primarily before area, well, probably area seven and then area two, six, seven.
Yes, all of that. Let's not go back too far, Mike.
So she, she knows and as, as board members, when we would, I know myself, when I would get probably a little bit too excited about things, Andrea, you are always the voice who would say, it's going to be okay.
I think this was a very calm board.
I've been in, yes. But you could say, I've been in the classroom. Here's, you know, here's kind of the perspective that I would see. And that was always invaluable to us. So you were always though, so focused on doing what was right for kids and that was very much appreciated. So you will be missed, but we're very, very grateful to you for your service and, and happy for you as well. So thank you for all you've done.
Thank you very much.
Andrea, I shouldn't have skipped you to make sure, do you have anything else that you'd like to say this evening?
No, no, uh-uh, no.
Okay, great. And I have no further report, other than I just wanna echo that the Board of, the next election for the Waterloo Schools Board of Education is September eighth. And so when we are all together for our next board meeting, which is September fourteenth, we will have a two-part meeting. We will have the beginning part where our current board is here, minus Andrea. And then we will dismiss Mike and we will bring our new, our new board and, and all that will be, we're gonna dismiss Mike and we're gonna give him his plaque. Right, exactly. So I, I can't foresee the future, I'm not exactly sure how that's all gonna look, but we will have a two-part meeting then on September fourteenth when we meet again. So is there anything further?
There is, I think we should remind that school starts Monday. We have not stated that, have we?
Jane said it.
Oh, Jane did, okay. So just for students, Monday.
Yes, bright and early, yay, we're glad you're back.
Yeah, the fair is over.
Yeah, Cunningham's tomorrow, so. All right, if they're seeing nothing further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Great, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, meeting adjourned, thank you.